Call to order the meeting to the Greenwood Common Council on Monday, October the 6th. If you would, please stand with me for the pledge of allegiance and after the pledge, please remain standing. We led in prayer this evening by Corey Freeman, an elder pastor at Redeemer Bible Church.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to its rebuttal for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Bow your heads and close your eyes with me. Father, we thank you for tonight, God, and we thank you for this community. God, we thank you for the Common Council, Lord, who is set to help lead and guide our community. And so, Lord, I do pray for a great character or good integrity, Lord, to serve, Father. They have been put in this place to serve, and I pray, Lord, that they would serve the way that you served us. Jesus, I just pray even for tonight, for just good clarity, Lord, for good guidance, and, Lord, in that in this, that people, that this community would be served well, and I do pray for your guidance, protection over this community, and, Lord, and that you would just continue to put people in the right places to help serve this place well, so that it can be a place of refuge and rest for people within this place. So, Lord, we do thank you for these leaders, and we do thank you, Lord, for you, the ultimate leader, who gave himself for us, so that we can be reconciled to a good God. So, Lord, we love you. You are good, Jesus.
Thank you. You may be seated. Roll call.
Campbell.
Here.
Gibson.
Here.
Hill.
Here.
Hopper.
Here.
Cash.
Here.
Lexi.
Here.
Manship.
Here.
Moon.
Here.
And Williams.
Here. We do have a core. Well, all of you should have received copies of the minutes from the last regular meeting on September the 15th. Do you have a motion?
Motion through for you.
Motion by Mr. Lexi, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Moon. Any additions, deletions, or corrections? Are you ready now to enroll call in the minutes?
Campbell.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Excuse me.
Cash.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Manship.
Aye.
Moon.
Aye.
Williams.
Same.
Minutes are approved on a vote of eight to zero with one extension. Reports, Corporation Council.
Okay.
Anybody in the control room at this time?
On this side.
Any other committee or board reports? All right, then this is the opportunity for members of the public to address the council concerning items that are on tonight's agenda. If you'd like to do so, please step to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and there is a five-minute time limit per person and a 20-minute time limit per topic.
Good evening, council members. My name is Nate Paul. I'm the president of Local 4252 Johnson County Professional Firefighters. Our address is 3209 West Smith Valley Road, Suite 1004. I'm here tonight representing the men and women of the Greenwood Fire Department. First off, I'd like to thank you all this evening, and I know these budget decisions aren't easy. You're trying to balance a lot of priorities. But that said, I'm here tonight because our firefighters are disappointed. Not just about the 1% raise, but about what wasn't included in the budget, the re-implementation of longevity pay. For those of you who may not be familiar, longevity pay is a yearly incentive that recognizes the firefighter's years of service. It's a simple acknowledgement that experience matters. It's about recognizing the people who've built their lives around serving the city, the ones leading on calls, mentoring the next generation, and carrying years of hard earned experience with them. When you lose experienced firefighters to departments that offer longevity pay, you lose leadership, mentorship, and the stability that keeps a department strong. Replacing those firefighters costs the city valuable time and money, something we've already seen with the numerous number of men and women resigning and transfer to other departments. With three heading to IFD and one retirement, you're already going to be short four starting in 2026. And with Markersville hiring seven more firefighters early next year, it's only going to get harder to keep these great firefighters here in Greenwood. The 1% raise we're talking about doesn't even keep up with the cost of living, let alone show these men and women that the city values their service. Re-implementing longevity pay would have been a step in the right direction and a fair and proven way to reward commitment and retain talent. Our firefighters love this community. They want to stay here. They want to raise their families here, and they want to retire here. All we're asking is for the city to invest back into the people and invest their lives in protecting them. I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to speak tonight and for your continued support of the men and women of the Greenwood Fire Department. As we move forward, I hope you'll keep longevity pay in mind, because this just isn't about dollars and cents. It's about respect, loyalty, and keeping the best people right here in Greenwood. Thank you, and I'm going to yield the rest of my time to the other members to speak.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Tyler Eringer. I'm local vice president of Local 4252, also representing your Greenwood firefighters. I'm also a taxpayer in the city of Greenwood, 3304 Winter Pine Drive. First, I would like to thank the council for the time this evening to address concerns of the 2026 proposed budget. Last month, I spoke about my concerns as a Greenwood taxpayer with the lack of compensation increases for our firefighters. In response to the last meeting and my concerns regarding retaining experienced firefighters, Mayor Myers exposed it in the Daily Journal. If people want to leave the city and go from job to job chasing the dollar, that's their choice. I want people that are dedicated to the city and want to make a career out of being a Greenwood firefighter and have pride in the organization. If all they care about is the dollar, they don't have pride in the organization. This, to me, is a bear slap in the face, a 1% raise for both raises. Asking for a reasonable pay increase makes these firefighters less dedicated. Having a mayor and council that understands their dedication definitely makes it easier to stay. The understanding that these men and women sacrifice a third of their life to this city, away from their families, missing holidays, birthdays, celebrations, they dedicate their own time off the clock to pursue training and knowledge to better serve the city. Several have turned down job offers elsewhere with better pay and benefits to continue serving the city, hoping to one day feel their dedication resincerated. There are families in this room tonight that also dedicate so much to the city, like not knowing if their firefighter will come home or not at the end of their shift. These firefighters and their families are deserving it better. Did a little research before coming in tonight. Greenwood Fire Department with four stations is ranked number one in the state of Indiana for call volume. They are not even in the top 75 percentile in paying benefits in our state. The city leadership has provided stations and engines. Improving response times, staffing has been increased to staff these stations, yet still does not meet the NMPA standards of four firefighters per apparatus, creating increased risks for firefighters and less chance for victim rescue. Mayor Myers, you question your dedication to the city. I say they prove it in the shape. As Local 4252 Vice President, I ask the council, no matter the decision made tonight, please work with us in the future to better understand the needs and public safety in our city. Thank you again for your time.
Thank you.
Brian Johns, Greenwood District Vice President, for IFA, Local 4252. I represent the Greenwood District. The men and women standing behind you tonight. I want to thank the members of the council for listening to our concerns and taking phone calls from me over the last couple of weeks. We, the union, and me, confer that represent the men and women in this room, but tried multiple times to give the city ways to work around the budget constraints, to no avail. We are asking for them to use $308,000 for what is already in our current budget to fund a longevity plan to allow us to retain current employees and future new hires. We have shown you we are no longer competitive than Johnson County. The city administration will tell you how much our fire department budget has grown over the last 30 years. Those numbers are correct. We have grown in a lot of positive ways. If your fire department budget has grown at an 8% rate, average rate, over the last 30 years, then please explain to me why we have shrunk from the 64 percentile to the 28 in the last 13 years when we look at certified salaries. You cannot use one graph or chart for comparison if you're not willing to use the same information to compare compensation. Before you vote on the proposed budget tonight, I would ask that you give these men and women some answers during your discussion for the following questions we have. Find out what projects the city plans on still starting and completing at the expense of the lowest certified salary of any paid department in the county. If we truly have a $3.2 million deficit coming in 2026, then why would any new projects not be put on hold? We were told that we needed to understand that these projects were in the works five years ago. It appears the city administration will again put projects before legal. We are not asking for large raises. We found the efficiencies within our current operating budget to fund the longevity plan. Where is this money being used now? All the suggestions we made to find the money within our tight budget, the administration is using, but longevity was never implemented. The only reason we ever went to a two-tiered wait system from a three-tier was to retain employees. So now we're going to go to make new firefighters wait three years to top out instead of two and still not be competitive with their certified salary. Are we trying to get people to leave? I was told by the city's administration that Franklin Fire Department was doing away with their longevity for 2026, and that most cities were doing this across the state. This is false. Franklin's Fire Chief sent out an email that same day stating that this information is not correct, their longevity is in the budget for 2026. We are again asking, how is Greenwood, the 11th largest city in Indiana, with a $72 million budget, not able to find $308,000 in for public safety? We have an amazing group of talented men and women here. Excuse me, we all want for human citizens to keep them here in Greenwood. Keep in mind, Greenwood is one of only five reported that doesn't have a longevity plan in place in the state of Indiana. This is why we are not competitive when it comes to certified salaries. We keep hearing from the city administration, how can we possibly implement longevity for public safety and not all city employees? We have explained to them multiple times that our pension differs from the civilian pension. We ask that you do a salary study for all the other departments in this city, and I believe you will find they are competitive within a 45 mile radius. The same data we presented has shown to you that we are not. We would like to address the article in the Daily Journal dated September 17th. Everything in that article is not a lid. They are facts, and our data is solid. We are very thankful that the city has grown rapidly over the last 13 years, but for Mayor Myers to say our men and women are not dedicated to this city and its citizens, if they leave to chase the dollars, a slap in the face. Most of the current members, for at least the last 13 years, have stayed here because we believed in this mayor and his promises over the years. The data doesn't lie. Our certified salary has gone down 36% in the last 13 years. If one of our new firefighters left today, they could potentially make $3.5 million more over his or her career and have a pension base of $39,000 more in retirement moving to another department. We're not chasing dollars. It's million dollars. I don't think that's a lack of pride in your organization or lack of dedication. That's common sense and information that you don't want these young firefighters to think about. The buildings that were built, the fire trucks that were purchased are very much appreciated, but those were items you had to buy to provide reliable fire protection to a rapidly growing city, and you must have firefighters to staff those firehouses. So let's keep to the facts of certified salaries, but how do we retain these new firefighters?
You have 30 seconds.
We have invested a lot of time, energy, and taxpayer dollars into hiring them. Why are we not concerned about keeping them here? Our men and women are asked to always conduct themselves in a professional manner anytime we are on or off duty while in the public eye. I would ask the same of a few of you sitting up here tonight. The disparaging, unprofessional comments that were overheard after the last genie of the open barrel were documented and well-known to our members. You want to talk about pride and dedication, tell that to the men and women that serve you 24/7. It's very disheartening, and we are personally disappointed to note that's how you truly feel about our service and to the city and its citizens. This membership is constantly asked to step up and do increasingly more. We are where we are today due to dedication and pride we have in this department. We have gone above and beyond to help you work towards an ISO-1 rating, get grants to help supplement the budget, work the overtime due to being short-staffed and training new recruits. If it wasn't for the dedication, pride, commitment, and loyalty of these members, you would have had trucks out of service, stations ground down. We never asked for a thank you or a pat on the back. All we asked for was to be competitive on our certified salaries, so we can keep this level of dedication and pride here in Greenwood. We tried to do something outside the box this year and tried to give the city administration options to work within their budget constraints and even found the money, but we cannot get any answers to why they refuse to do it. We ask the council again tonight to vote this proposed budget down. We ask that you exercise your right to ask questions, exercise your right to reallocate the funds within our budget, to start the process to retain dedicated, committed firefighters here in Greenwood by reinstating longevity. Thank you again for your time.
Who else wishes to speak to the council on this topic or any other topic that's on tonight's agenda? I see none, then moving on. Ordinances and resolutions. There's none under notice but tend to consider. First reading, ordinance number 2519.
Ordinance number 2519, ordinance for appropriations and tax rates for the 2026 budget year sponsored by Gibson.
Do you have a motion? Motion by Ms. Gibson, second. Second by Mr. Lexi. This is scheduled for a public hearing. Open the public hearing. If you wish to speak for or against ordinance 2519, please step to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Will this be a public hearing? Any discussion or presentation from staff? Any discussion on the council on ordinance 2519? Seeing none, then roll call. Ordinance 2519, first reading.
Campbell.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
Bill. I'm sorry.
Nay.
Hopper.
Aye.
Cash.
Nay.
Lexi.
Aye.
Manship.
Aye.
Moon.
Aye.
And Williams.
Nay.
Ordinance 2519 passes first reading six to three. Ordinance 2520.
Ordinance number 2520, ordinance fixing salaries of appointed officers and employees of the city of Greenwood, Indiana, and city utilities for the year 2026, sponsored by Gibson.
Do you have a motion?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Gibson, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Lexi. Any discussion? Seeing none, then roll call. Resolution 2520, first reading.
Gibson.
Aye.
Bill.
Nay.
Hopper.
Aye.
Cash.
Nay.
Lexi.
Aye.
Manship.
Aye.
Moon.
Aye.
Williams.
Nay.
And Campbell.
Aye. Ordinance 2520 passes first reading six to three. Ordinance 2521.
Ordinance number 2521, an ordinance fixing the salary of the city judge of the city of Greenwood, Indiana, for the year 2026, sponsored by Gibson.
Do you have a motion?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Gibson, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Lexi. Any discussion? Seeing none, then roll call. Ordinance 2521, first reading.
Hill.
Aye.
Hopper.
Aye.
Cash.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Manship.
Aye.
Moon.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
And Gibson.
Aye.
Ordinance 2521 passes first reading nine zero. Ordinance 2522.
Ordinance number 2522, an ordinance fixing the salary of the Common Council of the City of Greenwood, Indiana, for the year 2026, sponsored by Gibson.
Do you have a motion?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Gibson, second.
Second.
By Mr. Lexi. Any discussion? Seeing none, then roll call. Ordinance 2522.
Hopper.
Aye.
Cash.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Manship.
Aye.
Moon.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
And Hill.
Aye.
Ordinance 2522 passes first reading nine zero. Ordinance 2523.
Ordinance number 2523, an ordinance fixing the salary of the mayor of the city of Greenwood, Indiana, for the year 2026, sponsored by Gibson.
Do you have a motion?
Second.
By Ms. Gibson, second.
Second.
By Mr. Lexi. Any discussion? Seeing none, then roll call. Ordinance 2523, first reading.
Cash.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Manship.
Aye.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
Bill.
Aye.
And Hopper.
Aye.
Ordinance 2523 passes first reading nine zero. Ordinance 2524.
Ordinance number 2524, an ordinance fixing the salary of the clerk of the city of Greenwood, Indiana, for the year 2026.
Do you have a motion?
Second.
By Ms. Gibson, second.
Second.
By Mr. Lexi. Any discussion? Seeing none, then roll call. Ordinance 2524, first reading.
Lexi.
Aye.
Manship.
Aye.
Moon.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
Bill.
Aye.
Hopper.
Aye.
Cash.
Aye.
Ordinance 2524 passes first reading, the vote of nine to zero. Ordinance 2525.
Ordinance number 2525, an ordinance of any read with U.S. Code 1993, Chapter 2, Article 8, Section 2-68, to increase the number of holidays celebrated to 12 and to delete 7.5 hour holiday compensation, sponsored by Gibson.
Do you have a motion?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Gibson, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Lexi. Any discussion? Seeing none, then roll call. Ordinance 2525, first reading.
Manship.
Aye.
Moon.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
Bill.
Aye.
Hopper.
Aye.
Cash.
Aye.
And Lexi.
Aye.
Ordinance 2525 passes first reading nine zero. Resolution 2515.
Resolution number 2515, a resolution establishing holidays for employees of the city of Greenwood for the year 2026, sponsored by Gibson.
Do you have a motion?
Second.
By Ms. Gibson, second.
Second.
By Mr. Lexi. Any discussion? Seeing none, then roll call. Resolution 2515, first reading.
Moon.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
Bill.
Aye.
Hopper.
Aye.
Cash.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
And Manship.
Aye.
Resolution 2515 passes first reading nine zero. There's none under second reading. New business introduction to new ordinances, a resolution, ordinance number 2526.
Ordinance number 2526, an ordinance to establish a designated alcohol refresher area in the city of Greenwood, Indiana, sponsored by Hill.
Mr. Wright.
Good evening. Gregory Wright, City Controller. I wanted to pull up a presentation here about the, uh, so we're on. See, I've got it on the desktop here. Pull that up for me. Got a full presentation as well. So, ordinance 2526 is to establish what is known as a designated alcohol refresher area. Did you need to share that before I get going? You've probably seen this in several other communities recently. This has been a pretty common topic in the last couple of years, and... Basically, Indiana Code 7.1331 allows for the establishment of such a designated alcohol refresher utility. What this does is it will allow individuals to carry alcohol and beverages in approved containers within the designated boundaries. Businesses that sell alcohol can apply to be designated permanent tea within that area, so they would have a special cup that people could carry those drinks in within the area. We can also have temporary vendors, for instance, Freedom Fest, Final Fridays, Wham Fest, the Our Lady of Greenwood Fair. All of those could potentially have vendors that could sell these drinks, and then people could walk within the boundaries of the Dora. This create an orderly and safe manner for those visitors to downtown to enjoy their adult beverages and visit businesses that do agree to allow them into their establishment with those drinks. The thought process being we're bringing a lot of people to downtown with these festivals, with these events, even with the restaurants that currently are in the downtown area, and we would like those people to also patronize the shops that we have, and that will hopefully create increased foot traffic for those shops that are there and encourage the development of other shops. The boundaries, you can see on the map here, it would be along Madison, starts up at Fry Road, comes all the way down to Smith Valley, includes the Market Plaza area here, includes Old City Park, Craig Park, the 523 Madison area, Our Lady of Greenwood there. So it's a fairly large area, but the hope being that several of these businesses market green, if they are both serving these drinks, but also attracting foot traffic, and then the other shops around it would be patronized by folks coming downtown for these things. The boundaries would be marked with signs. This is what the signs are intended to look like. Make sure everybody knows this is the boundaries. You can't go beyond this point. There would be either on their own sign hole, or if there's already a, like a traffic light or something that has a sign hole along that boundary, we could legalize that. Each business within the district can indicate whether or not they would like to allow people with their drinks inside. You'd have a sticker on the door. They have a red sticker, alcohol's not permitted. They have the blue sticker, come on in. If they have the green sticker, they're one of the ones that are selling those drinks. Drinks would have to be in a specific approved vessel. This is the current design of that cup, indicates that it is specific to the Greenwood Dora. If it's not in this cup, it's not permitted. The city would have control over which businesses are permitted to sell alcohol. They would have to submit a permit request to the city. It would then go for review and approval by the Board of Works and then be submitted to the Indiana Alcohol and Tobacco Commission by the city for final approvals. Those permanent businesses that elect to participate would be reviewed annually. Their permits would be reviewed annually by the Board of Works. Also will have one-time permits for those festivals we discussed within the Dora that can be acquired through this state application process. Restriction on this, no outside drinks are permitted. So like I said, it has to be in one of those cups coming from one of the approved vendors. Each individual is limited to carry no more than two drinks at any time, with the following restrictions: 16 ounces of beer or malt beverage, 12 ounces of wine cider or seltzer, 10 ounces of mixed drinks. Public intoxication is still a criminal offense within the Dora, so even if they do have the allowance to walk around with their beverage being intoxicated publicly, it's still a crime. During the due diligence process, we did have three common concerns identified looking at other communities that have gone through this process. The first one related to city facilities being located within the Dora, the second related to increases on advanced public safety, and the third be the increased trash production due to the cups. All of our city-owned facilities would have the red alcohol not permitted stickers, so that would include the fieldhouse, the community center, this building. Any city facility would be prohibited bringing alcohol into it. The hours of operation for this are noon to midnight, Monday through, Monday through Sunday. We would have increased controls by the PD to preempt any issues of intoxication and speaking with the police chief. For the festivals that have the limited area now, they've not had a lot of concerns or issues with alcohol and beverages at those festivals, so the hope is that this doesn't increase any of those issues. It'd be still the same people who are responsible for those events, just being able to roam and see some of the other offerings of downtown Greenwood. We would have trash receptacles in the Dora area, and they would be monitored by the city staff who are responsible for keeping up with emptying those, so we don't have the trash issue. I can take any questions. This this process, we have been going through and reviewing with several other communities how they implement theirs to try and make sure that we are planning for eventuality with this as we look to implement it downtown.
Any questions for Mr. Wright?
So Greg, the designated committees in the ordinance are, they submitted application and then this would not be limited to just those groups. It would be, could be just for events as well where they were then apply for a permit for that.
Right. So for instance, at Freedom Fest or Wamp Fest, sometimes we'll have the vendors at the park. They right now are kind of restricted to remain within the bounds of that. You could actually during the day walk over and go shopping along Madison or along Main Street there, and then come back to the festival and watch concerts or watch the fireworks that evening. But you wouldn't have to leave your drink at the trash can all the way out of the park.
Is there, there's some, obviously some expense to the city. I assume we're buying the signs. Who's purchasing the cups?
That, we haven't fully worked out how that's going to work. I imagine that we will have a vendor that will be chosen to produce those and then be those who are going to sell them if they want to purchase so many at a time would buy those cups.
Is there an application fee?
Not, not at this time. We haven't, we don't see that there would be enough additional work created by the application fee yet. If that changes, we would have to go back to this council and ask for starting that up. But at this point in time with the limited number of users we perceive, we don't see that being a big carry for us now.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you, Mr. Wright.
Thank you.
Resolution twenty-five, sixteen.
Ordinance number twenty-five, sixteen. A resolution of the Greenwood Common Council waiting on compliance of Visionware LLC regarding scheduling the time and filing its application for reduction from assessment, evaluation of structures and economic proliferation areas, ERA, and compliance with statement of benefits sponsored by Campbell and Gibson.
Anybody on staff want to talk to us about this? Okay. Resolution twenty-five, seventeen.
Resolution number twenty-five, seventeen. A resolution of the Greenwood Common Council approving interlocal cooperation agreement between the city of Greenwood and the town of White Oak regarding certain road improvements on South Emerson Avenue sponsored by Campbell and Gibson.
Nelson.
Hello, council. Before you, you have an interlocal agreement. This agreement would require a Greenwood subdivision to provide road improvements such as constructing a bypass blister and acceleration and deceleration links. These road improvements and safety improvements are necessary and required for Greenwood subdivisions in our unified development ordinance. The location of this is on South Emerson, and in order for these improvements to go in, we will be utilizing a land-ruled system. So in order for this to happen, a interlocal agreement would need to be entered.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Nelson? All right. Thank you very much.
I'm sorry. I just have a question. I thought of, is there a timeline on when this is going to be needed?
Well, it would be based on whether developers ready to start construction. They will not be issued a land alteration permit until they have all of their plans done and an interlocal agreement in place. Right now, this agreement would prevent them from moving forward with their land alteration permit for this subdivision.
I just wanted to make sure that they weren't trying to get something started yet this year.
I haven't seen them out there, but I'll drive by.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Miss Lanes Business, this is an opportunity for the Reverend's Republic to address the council concerning items that are not on tonight's agenda. If you'd like to do so, you can step to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Again, there is a five-minute time limit per person and a twenty-minute time limit at the top. See none, then, Miss Lanes Business from the Corporation Council, we have five CF ones. And anybody have any concerns about any of these five?
My only question would be if we need to approve twenty-five, sixteen waiving non-compliance before we find Visionware in substantial compliance.
So we'll postpone these five?
Yep.
All right. Any other concerns? See none, then I'll entertain a motion to find number one in compliance. Motion, Mr. Hopper. Second, by Mr. Lexi. Any, all in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed. Passes unanimously.
By number two in substantial compliance.
Motion, Mr. Hopper. Second, by Mr. Lexi. All in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed. Passes unanimously.
By number three in substantial compliance.
Motion, Mr. Hopper. Second, by Mr. Lexi. All in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed. Passes unanimously.
By number four in substantial compliance.
Motion, Mr. Hopper. Second, by Mr. Lexi. All in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed. Passes unanimously. Any other, Miss Lanes Business from the council? All right. Other Miss Lanes Business Corporation Council, Controller.
One other presentation. After meeting last time, I was asked to pull together some numbers to the council regarding the fire department budgets, where we're at with the budget process. Didn't want to start with kind of the history of where we came from. Largely starting out, it was a volunteer department, part timers. We did have a really low tax rate coming into the oh-eight tax reforms, which that is the tax caps, which then took away a chunk of money every year. The fire department up until twenty-six or twenty thirteen, I'm sorry, utilized what's known as tax anticipation warrants to get by paying bills in between their tax draws from. So basically that meant that they took out bank loans with their property tax draws as collateral. So then they were having a pay interest on that during that time. That was something that was changed under our Mire's administration. And then finally, the impact of the Affordable Care Act on the staffing model basically meant that where we were able to operate with the mostly full-time department, you would have to provide, based on the number of hours they were doing, you would have to provide health insurance to all of those part timers. So that was another impetus that started pushing us towards the heavier full-time career path for our group now. The strategy had been to build the reserves for the fire department so that they did not have to do those anticipation warrants or do loans from the city green day or general funds as they had in the past in order to get through. Talk about how we got to that point. Also to increase the number of full-time firefighters, grow the compensation and then leverage our capital funds to benefit public safety. That's been our long-term strategy. So first growing our full-time fire service in twenty-twelve, when the Reverend's administration came in, there were thirty-four full-time firefighters on Greenwood Fire Department. That was just over fourteen and a half percent of all of the city's full-time positions. In the twenty-twenty-six budget, we have eighty-six full-time firefighter positions budgeted, and that is just under twenty-five percent of the total number of full-time positions for the city. So we have been growing the number of positions within that department fairly significantly over this time period. As was mentioned, we did talk about the budget. This goes back to nineteen ninety, just because that was the data available on the state's gateway site through the twenty-five budget, which was just over twelve point eight million. The proposed budget for twenty-twenty-six is just over thirteen and a half million, which if you look at twenty-twelve year, the budget then was four point six billion. So in the time since twenty-twelve, that budget has more than tripled. So you can see we have accelerated the speed of growth in the operating budget for GFD over the last several budgets, exceeding the inflationary rate quite significantly. A lot of this is frankly adding due to full-time positions. That is full-time firefighters plus the benefits. That's what's driving a lot of that budget increase there. But you do see that the last five years, it's gone twelve percent growth, the last three years, fifteen percent growth. So it's been growing fast and significantly to get to that thirteen and a half million proposed in the twenty-twenty-six budget. Realized compensation in twenty-twenty-four, we wanted to point out that in twenty-twenty-four, thirty-one firefighters made over one hundred thousand dollars in realized compensation. That seventeen made more than a hundred and ten thousand. Of those seventeen, nine were over a hundred and twenty thousand, and of those nine, four were over a hundred and forty thousand. So it's while the the current first-class firefighter salary is slightly under eighty K, there has been a lot of opportunity for overtime hours and additional pay to be earned. And you can see that on the one hundred R, which is the employee compensation report. This is from Gateway. So see, we have the top thirty-four members in twenty-twenty-four. Of those thirty-four, all we said are not members of GFD. And the only reason it goes to thirty-four is that is where the fire chief fell on that list. We talked about certified salaries and longevity. So the certified salary is a concept from the PERC system for public safety. What that means is it is the first-class firefighter, first-class police officer salary plus whatever the highest longevity amount is for an active member. So with the current system we have, even though we eliminated longevity in twenty thirteen, we do still have individuals working who are covered under that system. So that fifteen hundred dollar maximum does get added on to the certified salary, whether you actually receive a longevity payment or not. The one thing about longevity is it is a long-term commitment by the city. That's part of why it was eliminated in twenty thirteen was to then put more funding into the salaries and the ability to hire new people. That's why we started phasing out longevity in the first place. While there may be a three hundred and some odd thousand dollar hit for twenty-twenty-six, it is a permanent additional budget line that would have to be fulfilled every year moving forward. That was part of the consideration this year. Additionally, as I mentioned, the other consideration was on whether or not other departments would be able to also get that benefit back. And that was part of the consideration is that because it does create that long-term financial commitment with the uncertainty surrounding all the changes coming out of Senate Bill One and all the changes surrounding the new homestead credits and the business personal property tax changes and the new deductions, we could not in good conscience commit the city to something that we didn't know we could continue to pay. In comparing realized wages, a comment was made at the last meeting about people potentially leaving for Barbersville and the lateral transfer process. In looking at the one hundred Rs for GFD and for Barbersville, there were fifty-seven firefighters that worked the full year, average compensation of just over a hundred and three thousand. In Barbersville, there were forty-seven with an average compensation of eighty-seven thousand. Only eight made over a hundred thousand there and none over a hundred and twenty thousand compared to the numbers at Greenwood. So there was more realized, even though our our certified salary may be lower, the actual realized compensation was significantly different and higher in favor of GFD. One thing I was asked to address is that there are differences in schedules. So the fire department works twenty-four hour shifts, which essentially works out to on an average month, ten days work, which is a hundred and twenty per year. The BD, they do twelve-hour shifts, which on average is fifteen days work per month or eighty days per year. And then the civilian eight-hour shift is all day, twenty days work per month or two hundred and forty days per year. So there is a benefit to the twenty-four hour shift in that it does bring up time for other things for individuals that wish to take advantage of it compared to the other shifts being worked by the BD or the civilian departments. We want to talk about the the projects, projects over people narrative that was brought up. As anybody who's been in government for a while is well aware, every dollar that comes into government has a people who will attach to how it can be spent. The park funds, particularly their impact funds, the redevelopment funds, which funded things like the fieldhouse or the pickleball courts or the sports park. All of those things are tied to specifically capital projects. They cannot be spent for salaries. And in fact, we've made a concerted effort to ensure that whenever capital is needed, it is not funded by taking away from operational funds, by taking away from the dollars available for salaries. We do that through whether it's debt issuances, whether it is using tip dollars, whether it is using any other capital-specific mechanism to avoid taking anything away from what could go to salaries. And so we make a concerted effort to protect those dollars to make sure they're going to salaries and benefits whenever possible. So talking about capital expenditures just in the last several years, Fire Station ninety-three, we knocked down the old one because it flooded all the time. We built a brand new one. They're on cuts in the road. Not including the land acquisition cost, that was a six and a half million dollar project. Fire Station ninety-five, currently under construction. You drive out there off Grand Road, you'll see some of the walls are going up. It's going to include a training center slash storage area as well as a burn building. The price on that, fifteen and a half million dollars. We bought multiple new engines since the mayor's been in office and also some other apparatus like the Rescue, over six million dollars of those. The tiller, the new, the replacement for ladder ninety-one was a million and a half dollars. So these were all investments that were made with capital. They're coming from sources that do not impact the operational dollars, do not impact our ability to provide salaries and benefits. There's a summary here. Since twenty-twelve, that budget has tripled, driven essentially by the growth in the size of the department, adding fifty-two new full-time firefighters. But that's not to say we haven't also increased the certified salary. It is up two seventy-nine, three thirty-two in the twenty-twenty-six budget. Additionally, the twenty-four hour schedule does provide for some built-in overtime. It is not time and a half overtime. It's paid out at street time. It does amount to, depending on which shift you're on when the beginning of the year starts, somewhere between five thousand and sixty-five hundred dollars annually on top of the current salary. Additionally, the capital investments that I did show there totaled up to just over twenty-nine and a half million. That is not including any equipment investments. That's just the apparatus building. That was the fire center.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Wright? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything from the mayor at this time?
Wait just a moment. I had something to add, some comments, and certainly paddles from our I had something to add, some comments, and certainly, I don't from our council meeting in September, on September fifteenth, if I may read those please.
Yes.
With city budget process reflections and documentation, members of the audience, mayor, chiefs, Greenwood Fire, police, and fellow council members. I appreciate the opportunity to address the responsibilities and challenges associated with the city's budget process for the upcoming year, twenty twenty-six. I T. Concerns regarding recent comments in financial history. I come before you to address recent comments made by Lieutenant Brian Johns at our council meeting on September fifteenth. He stated that in twenty twelve, Mayor Myers blamed the previous administration for putting the city in financial trouble and claimed the city was in bankrupt within two years at the then-current spending rate. He also said the mayor lied to him. I do not believe any council member was aware of the financial crisis during twenty eleven. The financials presented to the council in twenty eleven did not match those revealed by the audit at the start of twenty twelve. Lieutenant Johns also discussed significant increases in health care. However, Lieutenant Johns did not mention the city pays ninety percent of the of the health premiums, including for family members, and that those costs have increased more than salaries have increased. I think that is a situation familiar and similar to many of ours. The lieutenant also mentioned putting its people before projects. He continued by saying, we are supposed to be firemen protecting the cities of this community, not the accounts. Yes, firefighters are hired to serve and protect the city regarding fires and medical runs. However, there are several types of protection the city requires. Police to keep our city safe, special legal verse on Indiana state statutes, and special accountants well-versed on how our funds can be best dispersed. We must also carry specific types of insurance as well as doing drug tests to be sure our employees are in the necessary state of mind. Both Lieutenant Johns and the Neaton Conference Committee have advocated to restoring longevity pay to boost the pension benefits. However, longevity pay does not always be resolved in realized wages and can create long-term inflexible, inflexible financial commitments for the city, as our controller just mentioned. Indiana state statute authority, code thirty-six dash eight dash twenty-two dash fourteen, cannot require deficit financing to comply with the terms. Some firefighters have stated they would choose salary increases over new hires, preferring immediate compensation. I don't recall the lieutenant mentioning he was the top pay producer at one hundred and forty-nine thousand, three hundred and twenty-eight dollars and ninety-seven cents of the total three million, eleven thousand, four hundred and forty-one dollars and sixty cents. Perhaps that could have been used for pensions. Historical perspective on fire department funding. Having attended over seventy-five percent of the council meetings during my husband's twenty-nine-year tenure, I recall significant sums of money inappropriate to the fire department just to keep it operational. I don't say that as a negative thing on the fire department. John was on the the council from nineteen eighty to two thousand and eight. I did ask Mr. Wright if he could go back and pull some of those numbers. And he got as far as oh-six, but I can tell you, I know for a fact, because I was attending those meetings, that there were probably at least two draws during the year. That was not the fire department's problem. It was a problem that they only had one avenue of funding, that's the best they could do. And while I'm on that subject, I'd like to say that I have left some information with your chief, and there's a sheet that will show what the city has helped the fire department with since two thousand and since. And the chief is happy to share that with you. I also have another sheet, and it's the fire capital asset investments since twenty twelve. The lieutenant didn't feel like that the mayor had been fair with you. And I think if you see this, you will see that the city all along has been making increases. There's another sheet that's available also. So I would encourage you, we have to agree to disagree, but I would encourage you to look at that and see what the actual vending pattern has been. I've lost my place, sorry. Here we go. I don't know if I read this or not. Having attended over seventy-five percent of the council meetings during my husband's twenty-nine-year tenure, I recall significant sums of money inappropriate to the fire department just to keep it operational. I emailed controller Greg that to investigate where those appropriations began. He was able to go back as far as twenty oh-six, but I know for a fact that there were problems in twenty nineteen. Or I'm sorry, not twenty nineteen, in nineteen ninety, because that that happened for a long range of time, much longer than before the war came on. In twenty twelve, the city had two hundred and thirty-four employees, including thirty-four full-time firefighters. By twenty twenty, this increased to three hundred employees and fifty-eight full-time firefighters. And in twenty twenty-four, the city employed three hundred and fifty staff with eighty-five full-time firefighters. At that time, we had only fires four stations. I T. Compensation insights and operational practices regarding compensation in twenty twenty-four. The top thirty-four paid city employees included twenty-seven firefighters, mainly due to forced overtime. The police chief ranked twenty-first, the mayor twenty-third, the deputy mayor twenty-seventh, and the fire chief thirty-four. Firefighting vehicles have four-seater, the the engines have four seats, and they must have three of those filled before they can leave the bay. And I know that there were several years that we only had three. What I don't understand is the need, if a person doesn't show up, that you call someone in the first thing, the the beginning of that day for you, and then they're there for twenty-four hours, that we're paying them overtime whether they go out or not. I would think when you have multiple engines, that you would have other people qualified to sit in that fourth seat, just like they do on their rig. So I I I don't quite understand how how that overtime happens. Recent legislative impacts and tax changes. The year twenty twenty-five has been challenging for towns, cities, and government, and county governments. Senate Bill One may have temporarily reduced your property taxes. The state of Indiana compensates for lost revenue through creating new streams, new revenue streams. Greenwood has been required or is being required to implement a city wheel tax. I I don't understand how we can tax you twice on your wheels that it will. According to what we're being told now, the county will have a wheel tax and so will we. And that's effective January first and beginning local collecting local income tax in twenty twenty-seven. The state plans to lower the business tax limit from eighty thousand to two million, effective January first of twenty twenty-six. And that may be twenty twenty-seven, I'm I'm not certain that it's right there within those two years. Shifting the burden on homeowners, that means that all of us that have homes, we're going to be picking up what the businesses aren't paying for. They can well afford that better than homeowners, and especially when we look at our older community. Greenwood's tax base increased from point six-five-eight-three per one hundred dollars of assessed value in twenty-three to zero to point six-seven-three-two in twenty twenty-four and point six-nine-five-seven in twenty twenty-five. These increases were driven by bonds issued for fire engines, police pickup vehicles, dump trucks, and road projects. Some bonds will be paid off in twenty twenty-five, which will reduce the tax rates. By increasing our certified assessed value, we can broaden the tax base, allowing Greenwood to maintain lower city taxes. Commercial growth such as distribution and manufacturing centers have helped us keep the taxes lower than other Indiana municipalities. And we are the fifth lowest if you don't count the four towns that only have a thousand people. If you take those out, we are the lowest tax base. And so that helps us to draw businesses when they want to increase their 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 image, because they they come and they look to see what we have in our parks, in our schools, in our medical facilities, and those things. I close by saying there is much evidence, the mayor and city council have made large investments in the fire department to right the ship and build them up significantly. We have already had the designs for and the construction started on Station ninety-five in the present amount of fifteen million, five hundred, three thousand, two hundred and seventy dollars. I encourage Greg Wright, if you would, to please come to the podium and explain the the tax items that I have. And also salaries and benefits, please.
So I believe these are the the documents that you mentioned that the chief would have available. Does discuss the the information from two thousand and six forward. From what I can find in the financials available, there were loans being made from the city's rainy day and general funds from two thousand and six through two thousand and thirteen. There were also what I talked about with the tax anticipation, which is a big issue. A big concern with that is you do have to pay interest on that, which means you actually have less money available for your operations. What happens with the the Myers administration that helped fix some of those problems was the local income tax. The city started to dedicate a chunk of that to the fire fund. Beginning in twenty sixteen, we started doing five hundred thousand a year in twenty sixteen and seventeen. We are up to just over seven million dollars in the twenty twenty-six budget in local income tax going towards that fund. The benefit being, local income tax comes in monthly. So there is a regular source of revenue going into the fire fund that that keeps up from getting into the problems they have when they were only getting revenue every six months. So that that was what Mr. Gibson was addressing with the the loans and the the additional appropriations needed to keep operational. What we were able to do there, by funding it with local income taxes, we were able to give them a monthly income stream. Also, because the fire fund is on a smaller tax base than the rest of the city's property tax funds, we were able to lower the impact of the circuit rate of tax gaps on that fund. By not increasing the amount of property taxes hitting that fund and hitting that lower tax base, we could keep that from being hit hard by the property tax gap. So that was the other benefit of moving the local income taxes towards that. Additionally, within those documents, there is a summary of the different capital asset investments since twenty twelve. There's the building improvements broken down, there are the apparatus and vehicles broken down, and then equipment, including safety equipment or the exhaust stream equipment, et cetera. All of that is within that documentation, that's total just over thirty million dollars in investments. I did also provide, Mr. Gibson, with the overtime spending by department for twenty twenty-four. The total spend by the city for overtime was one point four million dollars. Of that one point two million was the fire department. Most of the the rest of it, there was ninety-six thousand in the police department, street parks, waste management, sanitation, which basically is pushing so, most of their overtime hours is the next big chunk, and everybody below that was basically around five thousand dollars plus in total overtime. The same chart that I showed were the budgets from nineteen ninety moving forward by years included in that documentation. I also got a breakdown of first-class firefighter salary and then the pension base amount, which is that salary plus longevity we discussed. That's showing as well as the number of positions funded at that rate, and then the the percentage change. Additionally, you will see on there, we did add the engineer position in twenty twenty-two to create another level of potential pay increase for individuals within the department. In twenty twenty-four, there were new, twelve new positions added. That was the year that we did the property tax levy appeal to get funding for the individuals to staff Station ninety-five, because we did qualify that year, and we qualified her enough to be able to fund that. So that's why those twelve positions were added in that year. You'll see in the prior year, we were adding up on average three-six positions a year, and then there was a big jump in twenty twenty-four. There is a breakdown of budgets and levies for the fire fund from twenty twelve through twenty twenty-five. You'll see that the difference basically that exists between the certified fire levy and the certified budget is the amount that's being funded through the local income taxes. Essentially, we've been able to grow that budget without significantly growing the property tax levy by instead using local income taxes to fund it. And so that's what's reflected on that page. And then also just a change in budgets per year. We discussed in my presentation what that averaged out to, but there's actually a per-year change from twenty twelve to twenty twenty-five.
Thank you, Greg. And I'd like to add a couple of last comments. We have to agree to disagree, but I really would like for you to take the time to at least look at the numbers and see that, and I'm not saying that this just during the mayor's administration, the current mayor's administration, but going all the way back to two thousand and six, the city has been working to broaden your revenue stream. If you would talk to the traders in Barbersville or Franklin, you would find that and ask them what revenue streams they had for the fire department. You're going to find out that each fire department has different revenue streams. And I know when you got that, or when White River got that big amount, that you understandably wanted us to get that for you too. But it just so happened that the application for that grant didn't allow us as a city to get that. It was only those that were in the, what's the fire, just in the specific fire districts. So there's there's so much difference in revenue streaming, and things can be so different in each area. The last thing that I'd like to say is that in twenty eleven, when things when things changed and Mark came on board, we had, every one of the snowplows and dump trucks that we had were rotten. And I say the floor was out of them. The people that were clearing snow, they had street, the old street signs, they couldn't have them up on the screen anymore. They had those in the floor of their truck on the driver's side plowing snow. So they had cold air and everything else coming in. And I don't know if you recall it or not, or if you've been in Greenwood long enough to know it, but within probably about three or four years, we were able to right the ship. And we were also able to get new vehicles for the street department, the, the dump trucks and, and those things, the baby equipment. But we were also able to start replacing your, your fire cars and those things. So you haven't been forgotten. You've been included all along. I think you just don't realize that you have been. And I, I would be unhappy too if I thought I had been ignored. Thank you.
Anything from the mayor at this time? You are a turn. Thank you, everyone.